So we are, we are in work sessions in preparation for our board meeting of November the 18th, which will be our recess meeting, it'll be the last one on November. It's hard to believe how fast this year has flown by, just amazing. Anyway, we have a couple of presentations today, and the first one is Robbie Lincoln, and I believe, is Rusty gonna help you with this, or is he just moral backup?
I'm here for him.
All right. From Robbie Lincoln on the status of the project at the airport, as well as the future plans. And so Robbie, I believe, has PowerPoint with pictures that are gonna be really familiar to all of Brooks here, so as he, you know, looks toward the time before he leaves and goes to Indiana, I believe it's, but, all right, Robbie, it is all yours, thank you so much.
Thank you Mayor Board for allowing me to do this for y'all. See if anybody got an idea, I'm gonna ask one question, where that helicopter might come from?
Where it might come from?
Where it's based.
I don't know, what's, who's got yellow and green colors?
It's the tail.
Tail.
Oh, the tail number, oh, I'm sorry, XA, sorry.
Southern Mexico.
Oh, really? Okay, how far south is southern Mexico?
Well, we don't know that. We don't know, they buy fuel from us.
Well, they make it shop then.
We also have a lot of Canadian planes with the C on the tail land here too, and of course, all of our end for North America.
That'd be Oregon with orange and with yellow and green, right, so it's not from Oregon.
That's right.
Okay.
So, yep, I thought that was just a good picture to start with right there. That's the terminal building in the background to the right above the fuel truck, and then our large FBO hangar there. These are the topics, I'm not gonna read all those, we'll just go through those one at a time. The history of the airfield, started operations in 1934, and they were training glider pilots for Europe, and, and so, and then they turned it back over to us after the World War II, went back over to the city.
But it is considered a former military base.
It is, so it qualifies for that grant you sent me.
I know.
But out of those 15 grants, three in the country that aren't commercial will get one, so I've got some competition on that one. Okay, at our airport, we have four jets, two multi, twin-engine aircraft, 55 singles, one helicopter, seven gliders, 12 unmanned, which is not, yeah, that's part of it, 69 total based aircraft. When I started my job here at the airport in 2004, at 24, so it's not me, it just has grown that much since 2004, which is good, and there's still more wanting to get here. I've got like 22 on the waiting list for a hangar that are not on the field, so. Our operations are about 50 a day, with the two flight schools and the flight lab where I retired from is a major contributor to this, they fly UAVs all the time on the field. This is a picture of the runway extension and some more area, the runway extension is right there, that's 1,000 feet, that little piece right there, this concrete piece right here is only 500 feet, but when we say runway extension, the project we're working on now, the taxiway's gonna be extended too, and this section right, this section will be removed, and so it'll move down to the end. In order to, let me get back up, my thumbs are a little big here, okay. This section of land we bought from the Millers, 27 acres, a little over, for the runway safety object area, we can't build anything in there or anything down here on this end, so due to the minimums are gonna change where the aircraft can get any worse weather. So that's, that's the project that's working on there, and I've got a little bit of funding to show you on that. This bottom line that's gonna go add another 1,000 feet for a total of 65,000, the bottom line, FAA this year came up with 2.6 million, MDOT, they're, this is 95% money this year and next year. Some years it's 90%, and some years it's 100%, so, but this year it's 95, and next year is 95, which is when we do the biggest portion of the runway, which is really good. So out of that 2.7 down there, the city's portion is $24,000.
Hard to beat that.
That's pretty good, that's pretty good.
What this will do, Mayor, is allow for larger planes to come in, we've had to turn some down, want to come in to Starville, so that's a lot of fuel sales we could come in.
It is, and if you're gonna talk, you're gonna have to get up here with Robbie so we can, so people can hear you, because this is part of the work, you know, that microphone sits here, so, but. Understood. It allows larger airplanes, which increases our business and our opportunities.
That's right, we're good on, on really good weather, but when it's rainy and wet, that's when the big boys don't like to come in on our runway, 'cause it's not really long enough. There's one of them, that's a Gulfstream 600, it's based in Columbia, Mississippi, and 100-foot wingspan, and it's sitting between the taxiway and the runway on the connecting taxiway. There was not room for him on the ramp during a football game, and so we set this up, and they wanted to park there, they've done this before, they were comfortable with that, we took the cars out there and picked up the passengers, everything went well, but, yep, that was one of them. The next thing is our military, not military, medical facility that we're looking at building, there's 2.075, $2 million in grants and local money to build that facility, we have all the grants, everything's going, it's about 90% designed, we're trying to wrap up the design on it, put it out for bids, get a contractor and get going on it, we're looking for about a year from this to be ready for them to move in, and that bottom line down there, this is annually with the, my finger, sorry, that is annually, where did I go?
We're doing maybe a year.
Yeah, all right, there it is, sorry.
There you are.
That's what the rent and fuel sales increase to the airport, and what happens is they wanted to throw in some of their money, the UMCC people did, but that would've made the monthly rent go way down, so we kept working and working and working on grants so we could get the full rent, which, you know, after the grant, you do the, you know, so that's what happened. This is the south hangar, this is the end of Airport Road, this is the south end of the runway where it's being extended, and so that new facility is gonna sit right here with a new security gate right there, a new ramp right there tied into this ramp, so we can bring the fuel truck down in here and service their day tank, and you'll have sleeping quarters in it and all, and it's a 70 by 100 hangar building. Now, fuel sales at the airport, like on this weekend here, we might hit 3,000, we did put 1,250 gallons on one airplane today already, we may hit 3,000, like Georgia, Tennessee, 40,000, Texas, $50,000 of fuel sold in one weekend, and the weather was bad. We had rental cars, we had a basket of rental cars for Texas that people didn't come, because the weather between us and them was not very good.
We've got the regional soccer, have we gotten any bump from any of that that you can tell?
I get people calling asking where they can bring their campers and motorhomes.
Awesome, okay, well, that'd work for the airport, so, okay.
Yeah, no, we get those calls, or I do.
Okay.
So I help them out. Oh, so this is about the fixed base building, the terminal building, that's what we have now, 1,100 square feet, that's a picture of it right there, that was added on to that FBO hangar. This is what happens when the soccer girls come out, and sometimes they bring lunch, and you put 30 girls in there in that little room where there's seven places to sit down, our building's a little small, and there's some more, but they enjoy it, I mean, they don't complain or anything. Men's basketball, sometimes we line the luggage up right along the building right there to keep it out of the inside when it's not raining.
And they're going through a TSA process in there?
They do it in there, and then they get on the plane too, 'cause they have a...
It's a 12-5 rule.
Yeah, it's a, they have a, what's their sheet called?
Well, it's a, I forgot what it's called, but anyway, it's a 12-5 rule where if a plane is gross, max gross weight is over 12,500, then they have to screen everybody who gets on. It's not a metal detector or anything, it's just to check IDs to make sure that that person is supposed to be manifest.
Yeah, the manifest, that's the word I was looking for, and at Starville, we are a general aviation airport, so we don't have TSA there all the time, 31 souls on an aircraft is our max, if we go over that, we have, they have, someone's broken the rule, none of us, but someone's broken, 31 we can do. So these SOB aircrafts that come in, if y'all seen them sitting out there, they're like 50-seat aircraft, they actually pull the seats out of them so they can do this.
Be legal, we want them legal.
We get about 100 of those.
Yeah, roughly 100 a year.
And they buy fuel almost every time.
You want something after now?
Just took out.
Yeah, that's the one that took the 1,250 gallons this morning. It came in last night loaded, and made out empty today. Okay, for the new terminal building, let's see, this is the fire station two, Airport Road's up here, this is our FBO hangar, and that would be the location of the new terminal building, we saved this on the airport layout plan, the new parking lot on the street side, and this is the ramp extension to make all this tie together, this is the ramp we currently have.
And this, it is concrete, right?
Yes, this is concrete, and we're actually going to concrete on top of this other asphalt, there's a new way to do that, to make it all concrete. This is what it's gonna look like from the street side, and that's the airside. It'll help with all kind of activities, even have rooms in there to offer public meeting spaces for non-aviation activities, we have 11,000 square foot two-story building, and it'll really help us with our operations too, to have a whole lot more room to do.
What type of meeting spaces are you talking about?
Just like conference rooms, like, you know, not quite this big, just conference rooms, we'll have one on each floor, in an elevator.
All right, so small, like corporate meetings.
That's right, that's right.
Flying and meet with...
Yeah, not 100, not 100 people.
Okay, no, just try to, try to remember.
Right, right. It looks, well, what it's gonna do is it's gonna bring the first impression for Starville when they come here and land, and come inside and see all this, they go, wow, this is really good, so that's what we're trying to put together there, and then at the, at the bottom down there, this is gonna be easy to do, right there, so we want to do that. Anyhow, the cost of the building, last year's numbers, we're waiting on this year for the grant opportunity to open back up again, but that's where we're at on the numbers, they're gonna change probably just a little bit, but not too much.
I'm guessing you don't mean going down?
Probably right, probably right, that's right, that's right, not going down. This would be for the parking lot on the street side, this is for the ramp extension right there, and this is FAA money, you know, 90, it's a 95% FAA money. All right, this is a picture taken from our local-based helicopter of the Tennessee game. On a normal day, you, well, no one's there but the based aircraft, there's two single-engine aircrafts on the ramp, so. Is that a video? What to do, Joey? Where's make the video go?
Oh, there you go.
Oh, there it goes, okay, yeah. The mayor asked me to get a drone up and make some good pictures of this, well, every time we tried it, of course, this is on Saturday, and the FAA wouldn't respond and give us the number back so we could launch our drone, because it's too close to an airport, like thus being on the airport, but, so I stood up on top of the fuel truck and made this.
You sacrificed yourself, boy, I appreciate that.
He did mine too, the aircraft you see there parked.
Oh, yes.
That's less than half of the traffic that we've had coming through, because so many people come in on charters.
Just drop off and it's all.
Drop it down.
Yeah, this is like all day Thursday and Fridays, like for the Tennessee game, there wasn't nothing but coaches and golf clubs all day long.
Golf clubs?
Yeah, they're coming into play, I guess, whatever, all day long Thursday, so more and more there.
All right, cool, all right.
So there's, this is Texas, of course, you see the aircraft pointing one way, the other way, according to the wind, which way we line them up, and this video, for some reason, been placed, I just pulled some pictures out of, there's that Gulfstream sitting on the connecting taxiway, 'cause we didn't have room on the ramp corner. This is a Phenom out of Atlanta, it comes in, what, two or three times a week?
Yeah.
And buys fuel, really.
They actually wanna face that plane here.
That's right.
But we don't have a hangar bigger than that right now.
That's my last slide.
Okay, well, that, appreciate that, that's cool.
Another one.
A Phenom's got a single point fuel?
It does.
Wish I had that.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
Why don't you get you a Phenom?
It's just a little video there of Georgia versus us. Now, we're talking about putting another aircraft in, this is the aircraft hangar that Pafrid has leased from us, and this is the new one we're looking at building right there, the size is not quite right, with a new ramp right there, and these two pieces right here are $1.2 million, and so we're putting together a grant with MDOT, working on that with MDOT, with SIMF, Satri, Satri, Satrich, multimodal, and there's no match on that grant.
Okay, so and you're talking for the, for the ramp and the hangar?
Ramp and the hangar, and that, with that grant, that, you can, some MDOT, you can only build a hangar, you can't build anything outside the hangar, they'll just pay for it, this one pays, will pay for anything, and then two of our bill grants can go towards this too, so we've got five total, and they're around 295,000 apiece, and so we got, we put two of those together for this, which leaves a little local match for us, so that's where we are there, and...
Credits?
Yeah, the credits, these are people that helped me put this together.
Roll credits.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, back up to that last picture.
Okay.
So are those proposed hangers that are on the east side?
That's right, that's airport layout plan, and let me, let me say something about that real quick too, when the, when the runway, we purchased the land on the south end down there in the 2022 AIP grant, there was money in there to upgrade that ALP page, and that's been done, and to get the full airport layout plan fully updated where we are with all the future stuff, as soon, as soon as the runway is completed, the FAA will put that money in the very next grant we're getting, so they'll pay for it, 'cause they want it done as well as we do, but we used to get them done with humans flying aircraft from $6,000 to $8,000, get the video and have the, have it updated, well, the drones now have taken that over, and we call the Fisto and check with them down there, these grant updates of a grant are between 100 and 160,000 dollars now.
American money?
American money, and so they'll add that to a grant that we're, we're gonna get for another project, and they'll pay for it, because they want it done as well as we do.
You're saying to update a master plan is between 100 and 160?
100 and 160.
Is that the only bid you've gotten?
Well, we talked to the FAA and said, hey, out of all you, these in Mississippi, you're seeing, what is this, here's, here's the, here's the window, and so...
So you've not gotten the bid, that's just the line that you're...
That's right, we, yeah, we've not gotten the bid.
That's, that's, I'm sorry.
That's a lot.
Well, what they're doing is they know the FAA's gonna pay for it, so they're jacking up so that the FAA pays for it, but I hate that we're waiting till we get the runway extension, because I think that there's opportunities that would come sooner if you had your plan replaced, but...
What's the latest on the amount of public space in the terminal building that they redefined around?
Well, we're up to 89 and a few points, after that...
Started off like 55.
That's right, that's right, and when we go through again, we have gone and met with Dr. Kenham and his group, and Marty Fuller and those, and they're gonna talk to Cindy Hyde-Smith and everybody else, and push, when we make our application and push in, they're gonna get it from their side and push down on it to make it go through at the 89, that's what I'm gonna tell, instead of the 55.
Well, I know that Dr. Kenham has a strong interest in us being well represented in terms of the perception of when you arrive.
Yes, yes, right.
I understand.
I've flown to all these SECs, I mean, I ain't a bit, but I'm gonna do, we're there compared to...
Oh, no, I understand that.
I mean, you go to Auburn, what type of people that, that we completely, I, I, FBI, you need some pictures, you know, you know, big buildings and all that stuff.
Yes, well, we also have a lot of money in Florida. In terms of being sized and smallest, we are also the smallest in the SEC, so...
If, if, if it materializes, and we do get the terminal building, we'll probably be number two in SEC, Auburn number one will be the second largest and nicest.
I don't know, Florida's got a pretty fancy one.
Well, this is proud, yeah.
Ah, okay, yeah, okay.
Thank y'all.
All right, well, anything, any other questions? All right, thank you guys, appreciate you doing that, and where's Chief? Chief Hightower back there somewhere? Okay, Robbie, go ahead, talk to him, give him that picture, oh, okay, ooh, we have big sheets.
Of course, it is, it's an area.
All right, I need about 10 minutes today, I'm gonna talk about the street program, and specifically, today we're gonna talk about the program at large, as a refresher, we're gonna talk a little bit about what we've done at 24 and 25, and then go through the 26 proposals that's on the board meeting for next Tuesday. So program overview, I think this is good to do every couple of years, to talk about how we handle our roadways, why we do that, and then what the mission is, so where we started is a few years ago, we began to look at the question of how much money do you need annually to overlay your streets so that your pavement condition is not declining? And when we ran the numbers out, it turns out the maintenance cost to do that is a good bit more than we have in funding each year, so what that means is without some type of intervention, you're slowly losing ground in your roadway condition year after year, steadily your roads are getting worse, and we began to explore ways to address that, and we came across a pavement preservation program, and this is, this is not an in lieu of asphalt, this is an addition to asphalt, so this is a supplement to things we're already doing, but the, the general theology behind pavement preservation is to keep good roads good, it's much cheaper to keep a good road good than it is to make a bad road good, for example, if you have a failed road that's one mile long, it's, it costs about $2 million to rehabilitate that road, and when you finish, you get about 15 years of life out of the surface, but if you can catch that road five years earlier, patch it, mill it, and overlay it, you do it for about a fifth of the cost, and you know how much life you get on the surface? About 15 years, so just because you spent $2 million doesn't mean you have more life, you get about the same rate of way, so that's really the approach in a nutshell, and I think what's important to think about is what is the end game of a program like this? So where I want us to be is I wanna get our roadways to a condition that's good enough that we can effectively cash flow that program year after year. Currently, we bond to pay for our roads, but as the average road condition comes up, it costs less money to keep it there, and so that's what we're trying to do with this program. And so I think the next question is when does that happen? So this is an early projection, this is only our second year in the program, so we've done some decay and growth models, but this is a best projection based on where we are now, we're in a 10-year plan, and so for 10 years, we've committed to around 3.3 million dollars invested into the streets, and that ends in FY33. Our best guess at that time is our average road condition is around a seven, and that's a really good road, I mean, that's a nice road, if that is your average condition citywide, to maintain that condition year after year is around 2.5 million dollars, and that is more or less what we're on, our projection for use tax this year, I've talked to Web about it, so somewhere in that FY32 to FY34 range, we get to a point where our roads are so good, we can afford to pay for them with the money that we have, so that is why we do this program. Okay? Selecting streets, I get this question a dozen times a year, how do we pick our streets? Why is my street not getting done? This is a question I'm sure you all have had as well, so I did wanna touch briefly to give some transparency to the public and the board on how do we pick streets for the city? So by and large, the biggest way we do this, this, this has the most weight, is we follow the funding allocation in our roadway plan, so, you know, what does that mean? Okay, this is what it means, so this chart is kind of a big picture chart, and it's showing you how do we allocate our funds, so the plan we follow tells you how much money to spend year after year, but it also tells you where to put those dollars to get the most mile for your road, so you can see on the bottom, we have roadway condition, this is your worst, this is your best, and the bulk of our funding is right here in the three to five category. What we're trying to do is keep asphalt roads from becoming failed roads, and keep preservation roads become, from becoming asphalt roads, so you've catched them right before they did. What's important about this graph is this graph changes based on your average road condition, so Biloxi looks different than Oxford, looks different than Starville, this is unique to our current condition, which is a 5.4. I say that because as we go through this program, what's gonna happen is the shape of the chart will kinda stay the same, but this peak is gonna start moving to the right, the bulk of your funding moves to the right to get your roads are getting better, and we'll get back to this in a minute, it's why I'm telling you this, but this is specific to Starville, and it changes over time, okay? So this is, that's the primary way we select streets. The second way is average daily traffic, this is the number of cars on a street, so if I have a $100,000 road that gets 50 cars a day, and let's say I've had 50 complaints, and then across town I have a $100,000 road, all things equal, but it gets 8,000 cars a day, with zero complaints, we're gonna prioritize the 8,000-car road, because it impacts the highest number of residents, visitors, and it also has the most weight on it, that road is gonna deteriorate more quickly than the local road, so this is, this is our mission, is to get those roads taken care of first, that is not to say that we don't do neighborhood streets, I would say as we go through this program, we're gonna start taking care of those collectors and arterials we neglected, and you'll see more local roads come back into the program, so we're, we're kinda paying some taxes that are due, but as we go through the program, the neighborhood streets will surface back up, and so what I tell people is it's not no, it's just not right now. And then finally, we coordinate with our utility providers, that's Ed and his team, it's Atmos, it's telecommunication folks, we find out where their issues are and where their projects are, and we try to stay away from those streets if at all possible, we also look at capital improvement projects, I'll give you an example, Spring Street needs to be overlaid pretty desperately, all of our Brooks knows about this, we pushed that to 27, because next year we have a TA grant from MDOT, it's gonna tear the road up, so there's no point to overlay now, we wait one year, so even though the, the plan would recommend that street, we have to use some good judgment on when those get overlaid, and then we get with Daniel and his team at the planning office and try to see, for example, MSU's doing all of their things downtown, or in the Cotton District, we're holding off on cornwall drill till they get finished, so those types of items factor in, and I would say this is the bulk of how we select our streets, okay? All right, so progress so far, this is really an audit to the board of the first two years of the program, how we've used the funding, and what we've accomplished, in 24, we covered 33 total lane miles of roadways that added 373 years of life to the network, and I've got here at the bottom, that's greater than 315, 315 is our network, that's what we lose every year, so we need to be above that. Three fifteen is our network, that's what we lose every year, so we need to be above that. So you see this year, we had a pretty good bit of ground covered, and we invested three point seven million. Twenty-five, we covered thirty lane miles. We added three hundred and forty years of life to the network. It's about a ten percent surplus over our maintenance, and we invested three point three million. Okay? And then this is that funding allocation chart.
I ask this all the time when you get that number. About how many lane miles do we have total?
Three fifteen.
Three fifteen, okay, that's what that maximum is.
It is, and so... It's synonymous with the length. Here's the theory. We have three hundred and fifteen lane miles every year, those age by one year. So you lose three hundred and fifteen years of life on every piece of pavement. Okay? And then this, this is to show the board that we have more or less followed the funding allocation. So orange bars, I know this is a lot. Orange bars are what the plan recommends. Gray bars are how we spent in twenty-four. Dark bars are how we spent in twenty-five. You'll see, oh, there's a discrepancy here, maybe you're a little bit off here. That gets down into the length of the road itself. It's hard to match dollar for dollar. I think what you look for is are we following the shape of the curve? And we are. Okay? And then here's some B-rolls from the work we did in Reno this year in twenty-five. This is a, this is a cap seal. A cap seal is a two-step process for a road that's rated five. And what you see in this image is this truck is adding liquid asphalt to the road, and they push it into all the cracks with the bro. That mass seals every crack in the road at one time. And then they come immediately behind it with a chip spreader. This puts a small aggregate on that liquid asphalt. All that chip does is gives people a way to drop on it. That's its function is to get it up into traffic. And then we let this sit for about a week and cure. And then we come behind it with a microsurface, what you see here. This has really been popular in our neighborhoods. It looks really nice. It does, it's an asphalt quality looking rod, and so we cover that chip with this. And that gets you about ten years of life at about a third of the cost. And then in the top left, I've got our signs we put up this year for communicating to our public. This was really successful. If you scan that QR code right now, it's going to take you to our webpage, uh, which we're really proud of. But this was a great way to get the word out to people as schedules change.
Let me also say that our code enforcement were very active this year, and they saw those. They saw those in the right of way and pulled them up, so we should communicate with code at the same time. I thought it was great, both were working well.
We've done door hangers, letters, everything above, but this is by far the easiest and most effective. Okay, last, last couple of slides. This is the proposal for twenty-six. So this year, if approved, we plan to treat thirty-two total lane miles. That's going to add three hundred and fifty-two years of life. Again, that's above the maintenance of three fifteen, and we're spending around three point four million dollars on the program. This is the funding allocation chart. So the green bars are what the plan recommends, the dark blue bars are what we're planning to do. You're saying, hey, that's, you know, you're a little bit off there. Well, the reason for this is because, as I mentioned earlier, this peak is starting to shift to the right. We have been in this program a couple of years, the roads are getting in better condition, and so the roads eligible down here in two or three, we're running out of them. I mean, there's still some out there, but if they're arterials and collectors, we've made a ton of ground. So you're going to see this peak shift to the right as we continue. And so what I'll do in twenty-six is come back with a new roadway assessment, a new curve, and it's going to closely match to what we're doing. So that's a good sign, you want that to be the case. And then this breaks every rule of PowerPoint presentation slides ever, but I wanted for the record to have the full list on the slides, which you also have at the back of your sheet that we handed out. And then the information on the right is how this effectively breaks out per contract. Asphalt, striping, preservation, so on and so forth. So it gives you a total budget of three point four three billion. Um, I give Stephen the credit for putting all this together. He has done all the hard work, so I just get up here and talk about it. But that's really where we're at today. Um, if there's any questions, I'm happy to go to get through those.
The color coding on that, on that, that coat circle, you know, that's the issue I have with that road.
Yeah.
Good, well, you just got the cracks in it. What's about the, what, is there anything about the color of the coating, is that moving?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I should have mentioned that. It's, the color coding in the slides is broken out for treatment type.
Okay.
So asphalt at the top, cap seal, microservice, crack seal at the bottom. But you'll see on coat circle, we have in parentheses from plastic. That's, um, that's some bad stuff. That's the way to say it. It's like a crack seal, it's a wide band, it's really for exactly what that issue is. This will be the first year we've tried it, so it'll be a really good test case, but I, I think that's a good treatment for that road.
It's a great road, you just got those cracks in it, you just replace it, so it's in the face.
Go to your, go to your last slide there. Okay, well, note the right-hand little narrative right hand in there. Um, we are being, um, modeled for what other people are doing. Columbus is picking this up, the county's looking at doing it. They had a preservation, what should we call it, a support session or a, uh, where people came in from Meridian and Jackson and...
People.
To look at how we're modeling this. So I just want to give Cody and his team the, all the props I possibly can to say this is, this is an extraordinary thing that you're doing, congratulations. It is also obviously serving other communities because we are showing them the way, which I think is fabulous, so...
Well, and the board supported it, so thank y'all, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right, thank y'all.
Thanks. Any other questions to Cody before we leave off the hook here? Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, two cents of minutes, and just talk to us about those, you're all good?
They're good.
All right. Good, all right, consent for those?
Consent.
Um, Mayor's comments. I am going to, you're just helping remember to do the Thanksgiving pickup schedule, which is going to be obviously will all start on Friday, so it will be Monday and Tuesday radio schedule. I will, I will add that to the, to the comment section. Anybody have anything they want highlighted for that, or the Happy Thanksgiving, or whatever? Um, I'm sure we'll see Mr. Turner. We're going to help make sure he knows how to get to City Hall, given the difficulty with, with being there. So I asked the chief to make sure he's aware. Uh, all right, public hearings. This is our fourth public hearing consideration of the adoption of the press pass hearing orders. I believe we reached a, a final position on it. Um, we made one last little tweak, and that should be in your packets. So, um, hopefully we'll have one, uh, fourth public hearing, and nothing will come up from that any differently than what we've been hearing the last three public hearings, so... Yes, ma'am?
And if I could have that particular tweak clarified and changed.
Oh, yeah, there was no substance.
No change.
Um, and it's highlighted in, in there because you've got two versions. You've got a clean version and you've got the, the highlighted version, so... Um, and then we will have the public hearing on, and Christiane is here. The tax increment financing plan. I didn't know I'd come today, so I looked over and saw you there. So, uh, we've got three things that are set up on the agenda for us, public hearing. I'm sorry. The public hearing is one thing, but the three items for action are, are under Mayor's business. So do you have anything you want to share? Or anybody have any questions about the, about the proposal or the public hearing associated with the TIF?
I'm here to answer any questions. Y'all are fairly educated about tax increment financing, and we've talked about the project. So if y'all have questions or concerns, I am here for y'all to fire away.
Okay, anyway.
There've just been a couple of things that have come up in the last couple of days. To be sure, we dotted eyes and clauses to define an effective date was one of them. There's an accrued fund, the thing that doesn't interest anybody, but probably will well. And then you, you brought up the idea of an interlocal agreement with the county that we need to have.
Well, let's back up to the accrued fund.
Okay.
Where is that coming from?
It's in the, um, the section about the debt service.
Oh, okay, the debt service reserve fund.
And it's, it's great that it, um, it actually, um, outlines what happens to that debt service fund.
Right.
With loans, but it, but it also mentions any accrued funds. Is that, is that interest?
Yes, ma'am.
Is interest?
Yes, ma'am. Um, and I did not bring the development agreement with me. Do you have concerns about how the interests is applied?
No, just, just, no, can I look into it?
Okay, okay. Um, the interlocal agreement. At the, at the county's meeting, they voted to adopt an interlocal agreement, but I never saw a form of one. And typically, that's prepared by bond counsel, and I represent the developer because it is a bond document. You know, this is just a TIF plan that sets the parameters, and then the development agreement is the contract with the city and the developer. The bond documents are your interlocal, the bond resolution, pledge agreements, things like that. So when you said you were going to talk to Rob, I thought, well, maybe there's an interlocal circulated that I hadn't seen.
He hadn't circulated yet, but with, when that time comes, we'll, we'll be on top of it.
I am always happy to prepare any documents, knowing that I won't be y'all's bond counsel, though, so take it with, you know, the developers preparing.
Yeah, we'll work with Brad Davis on that.
Okay.
Whoever county, it's, it is a small issue that can be taken care of pretty quick.
Okay, okay.
So my concern was, if we tweak our set of documents, does that, does it have to go back to the county in an identical form for them to re-approve what we have modified?
So, oh, I'm sorry.
The development agreement's ours, so...
Okay, so there is no, there's no comparable document that has to have the whole signatures? Okay, that's great, that was my only curiosity question.
Now, changes to the TIF plan may need to go back. Let's say we were, y'all said, you know what, we're going to adopt this, but we want the TIF district to be twenty acres instead of twenty-two. That's a change that would need to be approved.
That was where we were going, it was just some documents, so, well, as you said, the money, money issue.
And I don't want to negotiate against myself or the developer, but I will say this, if you don't feel like you've had time to digest the development agreement, we usually try to run it right after the TIF plan, so y'all don't get tired of seeing me, you know, and get it approved. But if you haven't had adequate time, we can do it at another meeting if we need to. I don't want the city to feel rushed on what they're doing.
Okay.
Let, let's talk just, just briefly and certainly, and we'll, yeah, we'll put a bow on it.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Anybody, any questions?
I'm excited about what's going on in Starville, y'all. There's exciting things, and we're glad to be part of it.
Find your way, I would have sent you a note that said, here's how you're going to get here.
I did find my way.
It was a little challenging.
Yeah, I'll just wait and talk to you after.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, and then we've got the first public hearing on the pen handling ordinance again, which just added hours associated with soliciting during day by day. So that's, that's in your package. Uh, and then Daniel, public hearing on the rezoning?
Yeah, this is the first kind of phase or step for a multi-dwelling development on Carter Bowl Hard, and at the Plains Zone Commission, they've had it again, so you're welcome.
Okay, all right, the first public hearing on that, and next again?
This one's simply just an accessory dwelling unit located in the rear yard of that eight oh two pine. And that was also recommended for.
Actually, no, it's just going to be a mother, it's way as far as the darn old sun, or a laid back.
Just about four square feet, it means all setbacks, it's a rear yard.
Okay, all right, great, well, and the fact that it was unanimous is helpful to me, okay? And then last but not least?
And the last one, uh, this is the person who's looking to put a real estate office in an existing residential structure to make it like a mixed-use building. And so it's just a use exception, it's not something that stayed there forever. It's, it's tied to the applicant that's specific use.
Okay, all right.
And that was recommended for.
And that was, all right, cool, all right, well, we'll have public hearings on all those. All right, and then under Mayor's business, I just dropped the TIF agreements and the associated resolutions, et cetera, under Mayor's business, but we'll be holding off on that until the public hearing first. I just want to take the action items and move them further back, so... Uh, and then under Board Business, we've got, uh, this is the date in which the five twelve Martin Luther King Drive, uh, structure that we declared twenty-one nineteen eleven for compliance. I talked with the folks this morning, they have made no resolution. I talked to Burke about it. Um, as far as I'm concerned, this, this remains an issue of the building, the city. Who owns it is not our, is not our concern. Our concern is the sta, is the status of the building because it is dilapidated, severely dilapidated. And so they're still sorting out the ownership, but as long as we give notice to everybody, which we have done, and I've also had a conversation, so they've got not only legal notice, they've got real notice, they've got actual notice. Um, then I've told them that, you know, they had ninety days to, to do something and nothing, nothing got done. So anyway, that's just, that's coming back to you for that purpose because we had given them ninety days, and this is the date that it comes back around for Board's review, so... Uh, and then under Department Business, we've got, um, final class. Daniel, you again?
This is a, simply just a lot split as part of a medical office that's being developed. And there is one condition associated with this, uh, request, and it's just regarding the sidewalks and how they're going to handle the construction or bonding.
Okay, but nothing that...
No issues, DRC's approved everything, so...
Okay, so consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And under Engineering, Cody, we've got the, um, Main Street Improvements Project. Oh, there you are, sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's for really two things. It's for irrigation zoning. It turns out shrubs and trees don't get watered the same rate, so you have to split those up just to get sure they're novel. And then the second part is for the foundations in front of Restaurant Tyler, to ensure those were supportive of the, the, as we get later on.
Okay, all right, consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay? And then the twenty twenty-six street improvement list, any reason not to put that one on, consent? Okay, consent. Um, the, let's see, the financial statements, anything associated with that one that we need to know about? We're on the web, there you are, okay, all good? Okay, consent for that one? All right. Uh, Fire Department, we have firefighting gear. Apparently, the price went up between the time we originally printed and the time that we... It was, I know, so consent for that one? Okay? Um, HR, we've got job descriptions for, um, the Chief Financial Officer, the City Clerk, and the Grants and Finance Manager position. Any issues with any of those? We needed to re, we will rework those based on the difference in the positions and the people associated with it, so... Any issues? Consent for that, okay? Um, advertising for the Grants and Finance Manager. That would be what we postponed last time just in order to get these other job descriptions straightened out. Consent for that one? Uh, the Vice Mayor has asked that we leave the personnel manual off. He says he hadn't quite gotten all the way through it, so, um, I told him we'd certainly do that, so...
Just off of his scent.
Yeah, yeah, and he said he might put it on, he might request it be put on at the board meeting, but for the purposes of this, he said he had gotten all the way through it, yeah, so... Um, and then we have a, uh, Lauren Hudson is a Deputy Director for Warren Sewer. Do we have any concerns about that? Okay, consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay? And then Veronica Hudson is a Residential Driver, another female driver. Okay, all right, consent for that one?
Consent.
Good. Uh, Parks, advertising for bids on the soccer field irrigation improvements project. Um, Stephen, is, is Chris is not here?
Yeah, he's on.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, uh, project's going to be over the seventy-five thousand dollar threshold, so the irrigation at soccer fields hasn't worked for quite some time. So it's upgraded to the two-wire system, which will make it work a lot better, maintenance much easier.
Okay, so right now, I think they're manually turning it on and off.
They are, and they, they have issues with the main break-in and all kinds of problems. So this will take care of all that.
Okay, all right, consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay? And then Police Department, we've got Tyler Technologies for upgrade of old software to new software. I think we look at Joel for that, so...
Yes, ma'am, that's just a migration system, new servers. So we're extending up some new servers, and we're going to migrate that old Tyler software to a new version on the new servers.
Okay, all right, consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay? And then we have, uh, some Tennessee Tactical Officers Association swap boards, which sounds really critically important. Consent for that one?
Consent.
Love the training, training was always good.